Turn her off.
Oh shit, I'm showing my face now. Oh.
Bob is gonna be just one minute late. Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna wait another minute till we're 7:30. Councilman Corbett will be joining us, but he will potentially be a few minutes late.
He's signing in now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, I just need one second, Your Honor. We had a little technical failure here on the home front, and I just got the electrical backup, so.
You're good.
One second. Thank you.
I think. I think everybody else is. I think everybody else is here. Okay, good evening, everyone. I am going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regularly scheduled council meeting for May 10th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call? If everyone can remember to please state the county that you are in. Yes. Councilman Bliss?
I'm here remotely in Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here remotely, Oakland County, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Councilman Corbett?
Here remotely, Madison Heights, Michigan.
Councilman Geddings? Mr. Geddings, can you unmute, please? Mr. Geddings, for roll call, can you unmute so we can hear you, please? Mr. Geddings, we can't hear you?
I don't think he can. Doesn't look like he can hear us either.
Okay, well, here he goes. There he is. Clerk, do you want to continue on, and we'll get back to Mr. Geddings? We know he's here. We just need to hear it.
Yep. Counselor Rohrbach?
I'm here remotely, Madison Heights, Oakland County.
Mayor Potem Soltis? Well, you're on mute. Mr. Soltis?
Oh, my apologies.
That's okay.
Excuse me, I'm here remotely, Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. Mayor Grassteen?
I am here remotely, Madison Heights, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Councilman Geddings, we didn't hear you.
Mr. Geddings, if you can unmute for a minute, please? If you can unmute so we can hear you, please? I have no idea the proper procedure for this. We can all see that Mr. Geddings is here. Markham is present.
May I just suggest that we move ahead? I have Ms. Castle's phone number. I can try and text her and expedite the. Get it back on later.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Corbett. All right. First up, we have invocation, Councilman Corbett. That would be you. If you could provide the invocation and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'd be, my pleasure. Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today. We ask a. We ask most humbly for a blessing on our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding and enrich our hearts with compassion and courage. And again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge, oh, I'm sorry.
Just go ahead.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
They're done.
Hey, Bob, why we got you? The mayor's got a question.
I'll be glad if we're.
All right. Clerk, if you could finish roll call with Mr. Geddings, please.
Councilman Geddings?
Why can't you hear them?
Are you, could you just affirm your presence and where you're located, please?
Because the mic's muted? Yeah.
Nope, we can hear you. Okay, push the button one more time to unmute.
Okay, we'll go back to that.
We'll come back. All right, thank you. All right. First up is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to presentations. We have four presentations. Mrs. Marsh, did you want to do these one by one or together? There's no vote, so.
It's up to the wish of council, but I can just go through them one at a time without having to defer back to you, if that's okay.
Please go ahead.
I hadn't planned on reading all the proclamations, but I can read them. So the first one is to designate May 2021 as the Asian Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. So the Human Relations and Equity Commission is requesting that city council proclaim May as Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The second proclamation is to designate May the 14th as Arpixia Awareness Day. Okay, so Mayor Grassteen is requesting the city council designate May 14th, 2021 as Aproxia Awareness Day. Evidently, I need to be more aware about that, as I can't pronounce it. Um, number three, the proclamation is to designate May 2021 as Jewish American Heritage Month. The Human Relations and Equity Commission is requesting city council to proclaim May 2021 as Jewish American Heritage Month. And the fourth proclamation comes to us from our DPS, which is designating May the 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. And the theme this year is stronger together.
Great, thank you. Did DPS director want to speak? I wasn't sure if he wanted to speak tonight. It's completely his call if he did.
Yeah, thank you. Melissa, will you allow me to share my screen if you could?
Yeah, it's already enabled.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor Grassteen and esteemed members of council. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to introduce the hardworking professionals who represent your Department of Public Services. These are the amazing people who keep our community stronger as we're working together with all of the city's departments and divisions. Our community groups, boards, committees, outside organizations, the school districts, as well as many businesses and residents alike. Our supervisory staff consists of our DPS analyst and planner Sean Ballantyne, our utility supervisor Chris Woodward, our streets and facilities coordinator Justin Kowalski, and our motor pool coordinator Tom Sadler. Your first point of contact will be the administrative assistant Sakina Robinson. Sakina will answer your questions, schedule your events, and connect you with a divisional supervisor who address your needs. Our field staff consists of Matt Hallett, Linda Harms, Frank Kelly, Mike Hodson, Johnny Bronner, Andy Uchevitz, Win Kempton, Aaron O'Brien, Lamont Paul, Scott Brown, Todd Luick, Mike Genalini, Brandon Dodson, Eric Kovak, Tony Whelan, Nate Carter, Charles Pritchard, and Wesley Bryant. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to mention Nathan Carter's service to our country. Nate is a proud member of the Army National Guard and is being deployed to Kuwait later this month. His work ethic and dedication at Department of Public Services will be greatly missed. We wish him our best and we hope for a safer two next year. Our motor pool staff consists of Mario Garuz, Kyle Ballantyne, Kevin Quick, and Kevin Green. The Recreation Division is managed by the Recreation Coordinator Brooke Heisler. On a side note, the Rec Department is now accepting applications for summer camp counselors, as well as your own part-time rec assistant. Your own part-time rec assistant. Please refer to the Human Resources tab on the city's website to apply. The Active Adult Center is managed by our Active Adult Coordinator Jennifer Cowan. Active Adult Staff consists of Heather Parker, Kathleen Faulkner, Tiffany Poole, John Luftkin, Marie Murphy, David Smith, Gal Verbeest, and Paul Gill. The Active Adult Center is currently open for business in a limited capacity, offering a wide variety of programs and events, all of which are carefully coordinated to safely navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic. A list of the programs, or a list of the programs, please visit the Madison Heights Active Adult Center Facebook page or contact the Active Adult Center directly at 248-545-3464. There are many different functions that encompass the Department of Public Services, all of which are tremendous assets to the betterment of our community. Working together with other departments, boards, committees, businesses, and residents makes us a stronger community. We work stronger together. Thank you, Mayor Grassteen and members of council for your continued support of your Madison Heights Department of Public Services. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Almus. DPS is one of those departments that sometimes we see and sometimes we don't. And we definitely notice when they aren't around, especially in the winter. So I want to thank you guys for the great job that you did this winter with the snow. We had a couple of days where I don't know that how much you guys slapped. There was a lot that was there, and it's not one of those things that you can really. You can't really plan for it because it's, you know, it's the weather. So thank you, and please pass on my thanks. I think I speak for all of council when I say pass on my thanks and everyone else's for the work that you guys are doing. Keep up the great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have public hearings. We have one public hearing that is for the budget resolution. Mrs. Marsh, did you want to do some kind of a presentation? I know we had a long meeting about this the other day. I didn't know if you had any kind of a summary or if you just wanted me to open this up to public comment.
Comments I'll make first, so the public knows what to be commenting about.
Okay.
So the fiscal year 2022 budget workshop was held on April the 19th of 2021. So this public hearing is being scheduled to receive public comments on the proposed budget. It's to appropriate funds and to establish the tax levy for the budget appropriations and to approve changes to department fees. Pursuant to our city charter, the resolution has been drafted, which if approved, will be adopted, will adopt the budget. It will appropriate those funds. It will levy the property tax, and it will approve several fee adjustments. So under our charter, city council has to adopt this by the third Monday of May, which is next Monday. There is no tax increase being proposed for fiscal year 2021. However, after three years of no rate increase, there is a water and sewer rate adjustment of approximately 4%. And that's about 13 cents per water and 14 cents per sewer. And the stormwater rates are a direct pass-through from Oakland County. So what Oakland County bills us, we bill directly. And that's increasing 1.44%. I also want to mention this year, for those of you who might have read the budget in the past, it used to be about a 300-page policy document. Anything you wanted to know about the budget was included. Anything you wanted to know about the history of the budget was included. This year, I, along with staff, transitioned that to an online dashboard type format, and that's available right on the city's webpage if anybody is interested. If anybody's reading the budget sometime after this and has any questions, just feel free to reach out to me. There's a ton of information out there, and it's way more user-friendly, I think, than it was in the past. So feel free to stop in City Hall or give me a call. So following the, you'll open the public hearing and following the opening of the public hearing, city council is being asked to approve the fiscal year 2022 budget resolution and fee schedule.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm going to open the meeting to the public. This portion of the meeting, we will have public comment to talk about anything, but this portion is specifically to the budget. If there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment on the budget, this would be your opportunity. Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to speak about the budget, so I'm going to close this portion of public comment and bring it back to council. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Corbett?
I would move that the council adopt, as recommended by staff, the proposed FY 2022 budget resolution specifically including the fee schedule. And I don't see it on that one line, but it would also include the tax levy attached to it.
All right, thank you. Is there support? Counselor Rohrbach?
I support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to support the budget. Is there any discussion from council? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
I vote yes.
Councilman Geddings?
I don't even see Mr. Geddings.
I don't see him either. He dropped off, and then he came back on for a minute, but I think he's gone again. Okay.
Your Honor, just, and I'm not gonna delay your roll call. I'm just gonna say, I did talk with him a couple of minutes ago. He never heard anything we said at the beginning, so he was, he was a little lost, so I'm not sure what to do.
It could be connection. People are having internet issues.
Okay. Madam Mayor, he's tried to sign on twice, but we keep losing him.
Thank you.
Um, Counselor Rohrbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grassteen?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the portion of the meeting where the public can address myself and council. I ask that you address me as the chair, that you keep your comments to three minutes, and that you identify yourself in any connection you may have with the city. And with that, I am going to open the public comments. We can see if there's any hands up. I've got Nick Taylor. Nick, would you like to speak?
Hi, um, so I, my girlfriend, I moved to Madison Heights like a year and a half ago, I think. But about a month ago, I submitted a proposal to the city to amend the pet limit ordinance. And city council will be discussing that tonight. So the, my idea to change the law started with a poll in a few different Facebook groups, and the group with the most support for it that made me like follow through with it is the Madison Heights Neighborhood Forum, which also happens to be like the one that is mostly in Madison Heights. But a lot of people who voted no on the poll seemed to do so because they thought the amendment would force them to submit to home checks for their existing animals. But it really just meant for like additional animals that would be allowed with the amended proposal. So, and then like other people pointed out that the home checks that were in my initial idea wouldn't be viable because we only have one animal control officer. So my actual proposal would either increase the limit without adding any restrictions to a resident's fourth pet, or it would require anyone who wants a fourth pet to submit a little extra paperwork to the city clerk as evidence that they're taking care of their existing pets. So that would just be, it wouldn't really require a lot of extra time or money. I'm just kind of trying to address some of the like concerns that people brought up with the proposal. But it would, basically, the biggest thing is that it would allow people who already have more than three pets to actually register them. So we would be able to get like those dogs and cats rabies vaccinations on the books and everything, which is one of the biggest things that the current limit is preventing from happening is pet registration. Yeah, every, every major animal welfare organization across the United States is very strongly against pet limit laws for a lot of different reasons, but that's one of the big ones that. Responsible pet owners doesn't really accomplish any of the goals it's supposed to. Because animal orders just. And the law doesn't really help us catch them either because they hide it. I think that's most of what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Clerk, I see your hand is up. Did you want to just say that you had something you were gonna read when we were done?
I do have something to read when you're done.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
Yes.
Rabbi?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
I'm the rabbi actually from the Jewish Center of Troy. And I know that it's a proclamation that is the, agreed to be a proclamation of Jewish American Heritage Month. And I just wanted to tune into this meeting, Mayor and the city council on behalf of the Jewish community that lives in Troy and the surrounding areas, which we service in Madison Heights as well, to give a huge thank you to the work that the mayor and the city council has done Jewish families, Jewish people with their families feel comfortable in the city. And the Jewish community on the east, on east of Woodward, so we're talking about Madison Heights, Closton, Troy, is really growing. Looking forward to work with the city in our future growth and really provide for the Jewish families that live throughout the entire area. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for the proclamation. And there's a very bright Jewish future in Madison Heights and the surrounding areas.
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you for speaking this evening. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to have, the clerk is going to read the comment, and we are closed. Public comment. Clerk, please go ahead.
Hey, the city received an email that says, "Dear Honorable Council, on April 26th, 2021, while watching the Madison Heights City Council meeting, I was appalled by Councilwoman Clark's false statements that there have been 181 black people murdered by the police since George Floyd's death. It is completely unacceptable. Murder is defined by Marion Webster as the crime of unlawfully killing a person, especially with malice if aforethought or to kill a human being unlawfully and with premeditated malice. In many of these cases, officers have not been charged criminally, so labeling all of them as murderers is inappropriate and insightful. Councilwoman Clark's numerous inappropriate and insightful statements in Facebook posts show her disdain for law enforcement, which I believe is detrimental to the mission of the HREC, which is to promote positive human relations. And that the HREC should work to promote good community relations and foster cross-cultural understanding between the city's police department and marginalized people and/or marginalized groups. Mrs. Clark's anti-police rhetoric is only fueling the fire against the betterment of the city and the mission of the HREC. Mrs. Clark should be removed from the HREC and subject to censure by the council. She is not promoting the city in an inclusive way and is clearly fueling an anti-police agenda, which this council should strongly oppose. Respectfully disappointed, Tammy Ricks and Fantine Avon.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have communications. We have several reports. Mrs. Marsh, first one up is resolution in support of Arbor Day?
Yes, the city council's direction to increase, hold on, to increase our tree canopy and strengthen it. The city staff have applied for and was awarded Tree City USA status for the first time in 2021. Tree City USA is a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. One of the standards required for application is that the city council adopts a resolution proclaiming Arbor Day with a celebration. The city celebrated Arbor Day on Saturday, May the 1st, at 1 o'clock with a tree planting and demonstration in the former Sunset Park. So staff and I recommend that city council formally adopt this resolution declaring May 1st, 2021 as Arbor Day in Madison Heights.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council? Your Honor? Counselor Rohrbach?
I move that city council adopts the resolution declaring May 1st, 2021 as Arbor Day in Madison Heights.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just congratulations to Counselor Rohrbach and Clark and yourself. And before you guys, former Mayor Hartwell and many, many others throughout the community who've made this an issue over the years. We, you know, communities go through generations and they restructure and renew. And unfortunately, casualty for many, many years had been the tree covered. I remember going through my old neighborhood, which is your neighborhood now, some years ago, and I was shocked and going, oh my God, this hasn't looked like this in over 60 years. And, and the thought that, you know, that, that, you know, your children, your grandchildren will be going through that neighborhood in a, in a more wooded and more community-friendly atmosphere is just terrific. So thank you very much to everyone involved in the project. I've been a happy supporter and will continue to do so. And I hope we're able to continue the work in this area. Thank you, man.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, when, when I came onto council and I rebooted the ECC, getting trees was one of the big things. And Counselor Rohrbach was not on council, but she was working or volunteering with relief. And she was at a meeting where we were starting, and these, these things take such a long time. So it was great that we were able to get the trees last year. It's great that we were able to get these ones. And she's just, you know, she's, she's taken the ball and she's running with it. So thank you, Counselor Rohrbach, for just, you know, running with that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a comment.
Please go ahead.
I, you know, at the, at the Arbor Day celebration on the first, you know, I was able to say a few words. But what I love, the quote that I was able to, to. what I love, the, the quote that I was able to, to say at that, at that event that most touches me right now is, is this, it's from the Arbor Day Foundation and they say, while most holidays celebrate something that's already happened, it is worth remembering. Arbor Day represents a hope for the future. The simple act of planting a tree represents a belief that the tree will grow to provide us with clean air and water, cooling shade, habitat for wildlife, healthier communities, and endless natural beauty, all for a better tomorrow. And I think that's a really important thing for us to say as council and as a city that we are making plans and looking towards the future. And it's not going to happen like this. Like you said, it takes a long time. But setting this intention as a council and as a city that we are going to focus on rebuilding our tree canopy and, and doing that, it is an important step and I really appreciate everybody being on board.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Anything else from council? All right, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings, I just need you to affirm that where you're located for today's meeting.
I'm here in Madison Heights in Oakland County.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grassi?
Yes.
I'm supposed to do Councilman Bliss first. Councilman Bliss?
We can't hear you, Mr. Bliss.
I vote yes.
And then Mayor Grassi?
I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up, D2 from the city attorney and police chief, the renewal of entertainment permit for 168 KTV lounge. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Yes, 168 KTV lounge doing business as 168 Crab and Karaoke entered into an agreement for an entertainment permit in March of 2017. This renewal was requested under the same terms and conditions as the original agreement with the intent of 168 Crab and Karaoke to operate as an Asian style restaurant and karaoke bar. The police department has reviewed their application and staff in the city attorney's office recommend that council approve the renewal of this agreement for entertainment permit with 168 KTV lounge doing business as 168 KTV and lounge at 32415 John R. Road for a period of two years with the next review to take place on or about May the 10th of 2023.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council concur with the city attorney and the police chief's office. And move to renew the agreement between, well, for the entertainment permit between the city and 168 KTV Lounge Incorporated, who is doing business as 168 KTV and Lounge at 32415 John R. For a period of two years, subject to the next review, which will take place on or about this time, two years from now.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Or Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roebuck?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Grassi?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item three from the city manager, the architectural services and construction management for the active adult center relocation and renovation of the library in city hall. Mrs. Marsh, should I report?
Yes, I have some brief comments and then I have a short presentation because I know that maybe some of the people attending this meeting or even watching on Facebook, this is a new concept for them. And even though we've been talking about it now for almost two and a half years, I want to make sure that the public at least has a better understanding. So I'll first read the comments and then I'll do the presentation. I'll come back and read the motion again. So city council is being asked tonight to approve a contract for phase two services with partners and architecture for professional architecture and engineering services, including a contract with Frank Reewunks and Sons for construction management for the future relocation of the active adult center and renovation of the librarian city hall. Since we will have, and then I just, so staff and I are requesting approval to enter phase two contract with partners and architecture for design development for total project fees of $170,000 and a contract with FSR for pre-construction management services to be estimated at 8,500. And I'll read that again when I get finished with the presentation, but can everyone see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
So this proposal was brought to city council in early 2019. And I'll kind of go if I can get it to work. So in January of 2019, we were having a strategic planning meeting and I highlighted for city council really all of the needs of the departments, but some of the specific needs at the library, the active adult center and city hall, and first brought up the concept of possibly consolidating these buildings at the civic center plaza. So the general idea would be to sell the land that the active adult center currently sits on and relocate the active adult center between city hall and library, renovating both of those buildings, which if anyone's been in them lately, especially the library, could definitely use some updates. About a year later, so we started the process. January, council gave us their direction to move forward. We had to do an RFP for architectural services, engineering. That took quite a bit of time. Then we worked very heavily with them to come up with the feasibility study, to conduct the feasibility study. So here we are now, almost a year later in December of 2020, they came back to city council and discussed the idea of the feasibility study. So they determined that yes, this building would fit in between city hall and the library, that it was a feasible idea. But we really didn't have all the pieces to make informed decisions. So at that meeting, council instructed me to go back with the phase 1.5. And the whole purpose of that was to use the architect to do two things. Cost out what it would take to maintain the current buildings as they are, to not move them, just fix what's wrong with them. Don't really even renovate them, only do the necessary things. That total, as you'll see in a little bit, came up to a little over $11 million. The other part of that was how much would it cost us to build a new, new facility for the active adult and renovate these both in one project? And that came up to about $9 million. So some of the things that were included and some of the things I just want to highlight, and there are pages of this, this report is public information, so anybody can see it. I just took out some of the most telling pictures for this PowerPoint presentation, but the immediate needs at city hall are about $2.6 million. That's the stuff that really needs to be done in the next one to three years. And I kind of paused for a second to say, really, since 2008, we have done nothing to this building, the bare minimum, except for that our basement flooded in 2014 and we had to renovate that. But other than that, we have not done any major maintenance to this. We really have been restricted on our capital improvements or capital maintenance across the city because of the recession. The next is the moderate needs, so that's things that you don't have to do today, but we need to start looking at three to five years. That's about another million dollars. And then extended needs, things that are going to come up in seven to 10 years. That's $2.4 million. And that's just the city hall building. At the library, again, same process, immediate needs, one to three years were about 331,000. That does not include furniture. The moderate needs, three to five years were about $240,000. And then extended needs, seven to 10 years, were at a little over a million. And then on to the active adult center, which really has the most costly problems with it right now. Immediate needs, one to three years is a little over a million dollars. And a huge part of that is the parking lot, which is in very poor shape. And as you also see in the middle of this, there is a part of the cafeteria area that is actually broken apart from the side. The foundation is shrinking, sinking. And then the extended needs, seven to 10 years are about 2.5 million. So all that together, just a brief summary of the maintenance cost equal a little over 11 million. And the relocation renovation cost were at 9.3. So, and we do have, partners and architecture are on the call today. So if there are any questions, when I get finished with this really brief overview, there'll be time to ask those of council as well. So when we ask partners and architecture to kind of come up with a, a 3D design, so we can all start to kind of visualize what we would be looking at, this picture is just of what it could possibly be. This is the current, I'm not sure if you can see my little pointer here, but this is the current entrance of city hall. And this is currently the side entrance, the existing entrance of the library. So this piece would be new. So this is current city council chambers, that little roof line there. This would be the 13 mile side. This is really a better illustrative view for someone who's just hearing this for the first time. This darker gray area is the existing library building. Actually, it's back here. And then the entrance. And this is the existing city hall. So this piece that you see would be a new addition. And that would be active adult center. There will also be, so some of the savings comes into play through shared space. So different spaces are used at different times. For example, our current city council chambers are used every other, like twice a month on Mondays and a couple other times, but it's not a space that's used on a day-to-day basis. And it's a fairly large space that could be utilized by other groups at different times. This is just the other side. This would be from, if you were looking from the court building to city hall. This is the other side of the library in the backside. So 13 mile side, the side facing the police department. And this is just a possibility of what it could look like on the inside. So this would be the active adult center portion. And this would be a library. And just another view, lower stacks, let in some more natural light, separate rooms for teens and younger children, different types of meeting spaces. So with that, I was trying to keep it really short. But if anybody has any questions, like I said, partners and architecture, I think are here. I haven't looked through the participant list, but if anybody has any questions. And with that, again, just the motion that we are looking for is for the approval to enter the phase two contract with partners and architecture for design development for a total project of 170,000 and a contract with FSR for pre-construction management services estimated to be 8,500. And one more thing I meant to add, so that as we move forward, we're going to continue to move forward in phases like we have so far. So the next phase is the design development and we'll stop and pause at that point, see what our budget's looking like. Is this still feasible? Is council still on board with this? And if it is, then we'll move to the next phase. So it's really three more phases. And actually, I'll ask Lauren if she has anything that she would like to add.
No, actually, that pretty comprehensively covers it. And so the, I will mention that Frank Reewald and Son did help us out with the phase 1.5 as well. So they have been part of the project before and would be continuing on to kind of help us develop it into the next step.
Thank you. All right, with that, what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes, I move that we approve the phase two contract with partners and architecture for design development for a total project cost of 170,000 and a contract with FRS for pre-construction management services estimated to be $8,500.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giddings?
Support.
Thank you.
Make a comment, Mrs. Mayor?
Well, motion has been made and seconded, so now it's time for discussion. And Mr. Giddings, go ahead.
I saw across the bottom of my computer that it said 270,000 instead of 170. Did you guys have the same thing on yours?
So we have closed captioning and it is not perfect.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, I, I just want to commend staff for this incredible idea. You know, I think what, what we're able to accomplish here is to take unusable or infrequently used space within city hall. Take some of it and allocate it towards the active adult center and the library. And we're taking money that we would have otherwise spent in rehabbing an older building and building this addition base. And so I, I think it's a, a really good move. And then even better than that, you know, with the Kaboom grant that we recently got with all of the enhancements coming around the library. I love that we've built in the ability to, to move and relocate those pieces as a part of this project as well. So everything that we're doing, we're still going to be able to use with the Kaboom grant as we go through this motion. And we're, we're basically turning, I, I think, what is it, like a gold out of straw here? We're turning a, a few older buildings into one completely enhanced building that's going to have a better library and a better active adult center for our residents. I, I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Bliss. Any other comments? Mr. Corbett?
Yeah, excuse me. I just wanted to, to say that I, and I'm going to be addressing myself to my fellow cheapskates who watch in on these, these things. I, I don't know that I was ever actively opposed to this, but let, we'll just call me an agnostic as to whether this was feasible long-term, what it would do to our finances. But I've always tried to, to, to admit when I ran into a really good argument and I ran into a really good argument here. It was the sort of things that why a number of us had asked for cost comparisons, flushing out some of the alternatives and so on. And, and some of the repair costs, if we were to just keep the buildings as we have status quo and try to repair in place, are just mindless waste of money. And that completely sets, sets aside the argument. Looking down the road, for example, the library, you need to open it up for future technological advances. The library that'll be here in 30 years isn't going to look anything like it does now. It's going to look a lot less than it did in the 50s or 60s. So my point being is that this is a positive step forward. The cost argument is simply, is simply irrefutable. Our, our financial officer and chief Ms. Marsh did a good job on that. And the, the numbers fell where the numbers fell and I'm sold. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council?
Your Honor?
Councilor Roebuck?
I just want to comment, when I, when I talk to, to residents, what I hear heard here so often is, you know, we want better facilities, we want more from our city. And our current facilities had such a limit to them. And the amount of work that needed to keep them going resulted often in a spending large amounts of money, you know, to repair the HVAC and the, the roof and things like, the things that residents never actually see or don't realize that they're experiencing. And I just am thrilled to know that, you know, these improvements and these, this, this whole project is going to really revitalize our ability to do many more things within the city, do many more things for our residents and it's going to improve the ability to have programming in our library for all ages. It's going to prime us to be ready for the future, whereas in the, you know, with our current facilities, we would have just had to patch, patch, patch for however long. I'm reminded, I was given a, my, my dad was given a mug when I was younger and when he turned 40, it said after 40, it's just patch, patch, patch. And our buildings are, are hitting that, you know, there, we're in that phase right now of they're kind of over the hill. I mean, I'm, I'm over 40, so I wouldn't necessarily say that's true about me, but, but the over, you know, our buildings are in that phase and we need to take a, take a renewed look. And I really appreciate the, the work of staff and partners and architecture to, to show us exactly how it can be done. And so I'm really, I'm totally on board for this.
Great. Thank you. Any other council comments?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about this too, right along with the rest of my council members. When this first came about, my very first concern, because I've seen the active adult center and it's a great Uh, when this first came about, my very first concern, because I've seen the active adult center and it's a great historic building for, uh, people who love mid-century. My biggest concern was like, what do the active adults like think? What are, what is their opinion? And I didn't know, Melissa, if you could speak to that a little bit, because I was able to speak to Jennifer Cohen. And I know that there is some shared excitement from there and too, but I think it might help our residents to know that, um, that everyone's on board with this transition.
Yes, we had numerous meetings with our active adult center advisory board, going back to the very beginning of this in twenty nineteen. So they have been very excited and involved part of the process as well. So Lauren and her team has met extensively with the active adult center and that advisory board. And as we go forward, we'll be meeting with the elaborate advisory board and different other, um, members of the community and city staff.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
Your honor.
Uh, Mr. Soltis?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to say that, um, and, and recognize, uh, give a hundred percent credit to the city manager Marsh, uh, who came up with this idea, uh, how many couple of years ago or what have you. Um, and, and to, to make it come to fruition and, uh, and to come true. So, uh, I give her a lot of credit. Um, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Marsh.
Mr. Giddings?
I remember you guys, this is going way back, but the seniors used to play cards at the community center at Gardenia and John R. I think now it's a facility to sell, uh, drugs. Then the seniors moved to the basement of City Hall. And then somewhere along the lines, they picked up an old white building on John R where the site is right now. And that was, you know, a step up for them. They picked up some square footage. And then they erected, uh, senior center, I believe in nineteen seventy-three. And then later on, put an addition on the back. So we're moving forward and I think this is a great concept. And I, I have the most good things to say about the staff and the architectural company. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Think everyone is actually, anyone else? Anything else? Right, um, yeah, I think this is a great idea. Uh, we've been talking about this for a while. So, yeah, I have nothing else to add. I think everyone's covered it. Uh, Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote? Yes. Councilman Giddings?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Grassley. Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item four from council members Clark and Roraback. Uh, the resident proposed change to the animal ordinance. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Um, yes, just that Councilman Clark and Rebecca have requested that a discussion of the amendment to the animal control ordinance be added to the agenda tonight to increase the number of animals allowed in Madison Heights. Should council wish to pursue an amendment, city council should pass a motion directing staff and legal counsel to further research the proposed specific ordinance language regarding this issue. So staff and legal are looking for direction from council as to what exactly they would like to see um, before we start working on the ordinance change.
Okay, so I, I think we're going to have a discussion without a vote. I guess I'm not completely clear on what it is that we would be voting on because there is no change to the animal ordinance. The question is, do we want to increase the animal ordinance? I guess that's, that's, that's what we would be voting on. Do we want to increase the number of allowed pets and ask staff to look into this?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Clark?
Um, I don't, I don't know if, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought that we were going to be discussing whether or not we can, um, ask legal counsel to go over these suggestions and provide specific ordinance language for us to vote on.
Well, that's what, your honor, that's what staff is asking. I mean, I think the first question is, does the majority of council wish to change the animal ordinance? And if the answer is yes, what does the council direct legal and staff to do with the animal ordinance?
So I guess that is the question. Does council wish to change the animal ordinance to increase the number of pets allowed? What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilor Roraback?
So I don't know if, I, I feel like we asked to, we asked to put this on the agenda to have a discussion about it because our, um, resident, um, brought it forward and I think it deserves a, like a open discussion. Um, I don't know if we're ready to make a motion about the particular ordinance or not. But if that's what we need to do in order to have a discussion, then I'm happy to make that motion.
Okay, for it. Councilwoman Clark is going to support. All right. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion? Uh, Councilor Roraback, do you want to start the discussion?
Point of order, what exactly was the motion that just?
The motion, or the, the, the motion was to, um, increase the number of pets, to have legal look into an ordinance change to increase the number of pets allowed.
Okay.
And, yeah. And should this pass, then we will increase the, yes. I'm sorry, I'm not very sure who that was. Um, actually, Councilor Roraback was going to have the floor, Mr. Soltis. And then you may speak next.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I reviewed the, the proposal by Mr. Taylor and, um, you know, I saw some really important uh, points being made. Um, I also reviewed the information provided to us by, um, Chief Haynes and input from the city staff. And there are, I believe that there are good arguments for both of these issues, right? So both of the sides of city staff, um, disagree that it is a, um, it's the right thing to do at this point to, to change the number of, um, of pets being allowed. And, um, you know, when I read through the information provided to us by, um, Mr. Taylor, the, you know, the, the question that arrived, arose for me when I read that was, you know, his, it, it seemed to me that his biggest, um, concern was that pets, that the number of pets that were being, um, our limit that we have on the number of pets prevents people who are in the, you know, or who are people who want to foster and, and rescue and help pets, um, dogs and cats to, uh, to find their new homes. Or, um, pets that are, animals that are like therapy animals and emotional support animals and service animals, things that, uh, would be important for, um, residents who have, uh, special needs of any kind. And so my, my thought was, you know, is there a way for, I understand the sta- the staff's reluctance to make this change, um, because there are often circumstances where, um, you know, having the pet, the number of pets ordinance on the books helps to facilitate, um, uh, the work that, that the police and the code enforcement does. But, um, I'm wondering if there is a, a way to, like a simple way for us to have people who fit in these categories of fostering, uh, therapy animals and motion support animals, service animals to, to apply for some sort of special exception with the city. Um, you know, then that way they would be identified and would be able to pursue their, um, you know, altruistic, uh, desires or their, you know, the, the, the needs of their, their family members. But would not necessarily impede the work of the, the city police force or the, you know, law enforcement. So that's kind of what I, I just, when I read through it all, I'm trying to understand how we can best do this. Did not want to let the proposal go without, um, kind of a, a discussion by council. So that's where, that's why I asked us to have this discussion openly tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Clark, did you want to say something?
Yeah, but, uh, Mr. Soltis, did you speak up? You had wanted to speak on it first, so if you want to speak, I can let you go first and I will go after.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, this is, uh, this is the first time, I guess, we're kind of doing it this way. Normally, um, we would put it on the agenda and we would vote on it one way or another. Um, so I'm a little confused on this process.
I think, Mr. Soltis, just to give you some clarification there. Every time we ask staff to look into something, we pay for that. Um, the Shermans are great, but every time we ask them to make an ordinance or to give us a legal review, we pay for that. We have a fifty million dollar budget, which sounds like it's really high, but we have fifty million dollars of expenses. So we just need to make sure that before we ask them to look into something, that this is something that we are seriously considering and we think that it's a good use of city funds, similar to the process that Mrs. Marsh went through a few minutes ago with the active adult center. She isn't asking us right now to approve the amount of money that it's going to need to get there. She's asking us to approve this in stages. And that's what we're doing now, is we are looking to see if we want to ask staff and legal staff to look into what this is going to cost. So I hope that clarifies that. And then.
Oh, actually, no. Um, I, I just want to hand real quick, because the, our legal department on April twenty-sixth sent out a memo about this issue and gave their opinion and from what, from what, if I'm understanding correctly, they said that, uh, they don't agree with the changing in the ordinance. I mean, I, so that's pretty much spelled out. And so I, I, for me, I'm, I would concur with, uh, legal counsel, so.
Your honor, I think that memo was from the police department.
Yeah.
A- and also, this is the process that we use, I'm not sure the date, but I know Mayor Grassley knows. When we revise the animal ordinance for chickens, this is similar to that same process. So we were approached at the city council meeting by a resident who came to council with a packet of information as to why we should allow domestic hens. And the same type of process happened. So the staff put together a report, a report, and then at the following council meeting, it was added to the agenda for discussion. And at that time, there was a motion directing staff and legal counsel to research chickens and come up with a revised ordinance. Um, but the mayor is correct, it's takes several hours to actually research or revise an ordinance. And that is a fee that legal pays for, so we're not going to move forward if the majority of council isn't on board with this. And when it came to us, we were really unsure where the majority of council was. So this is that same process.
Your honor.
I'm, no, actually, uh, Councilwoman Clark was next, sir.
Thank you. Um, so just this might help also, Dave. So Nick Taylor, uh, came to me originally with some of these ideas and some concerns he had about the pet limitations and, and how he, you know, wished he could have more. And he knows a lot of responsible dog owners and pet owners who would like to foster or adopt more animals, maybe make it a little bit easier on animal control. Um, and, uh, this is, uh, the second time that a resident has come to me and asked like what there is that they can do to help change some of the language in this ordinance, if there's anything they can do as a resident. Mr. Taylor went out and did all the research. He did polling in the neighborhood forums. He got support from residents all across, um, the community. It was a fantastic thing to see. It was even more amazing to see him present it to council and great now that it is here tonight for, um, for us to have a discussion about. And I think that the amount of research and work that he put into it, it would be, um, just bare minimum for us to take a look at it. Um, see what some of the concerns are, address them, answer questions, um, and then see where we want to move forward from that. Now, I know Nick Taylor is here this evening, your honor. I'm not sure if you can allow him to speak. But I also think that, um, Corey Almas and Chief Haynes are also here and they both have their own concerns. And I think it's a great way for them to bring up those concerns and for Mr. Taylor to speak to the ones that, um, he knows he can address. Because I know he's put in a ton of research into being able to answer this. And I think since we're all here with the same concerns and answers to questions, I think it's a good opportunity to let all of them speak.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Taylor did speak during public comment. Thank you. Um, yeah, and I guess if Chief Haynes or if Mr. Almas do have something they'd like to add, they are welcome to as well.
Your honor.
Needed to, but if they would like to, they can. Uh, Mr. Sherman, did you want to say something?
Um, I would like to add a comment, your honor. First of all, the domesticated hen, uh, circumstance came up in September of two thousand ten. And procedurally, it came up in the same manner that staff is handling this. As, as Ms. Marsh said, a resident appeared at, at council making a request. And it was added to the agenda by council at the September thirteenth, twenty-ten meeting. There was a video presentation presented and then it was referred back to staff and legal counsel with a list of items for, for us to consider. Ultimately, a revi- an ordinance revision was adopted with a sunset. And then ultimately, the sunset was removed from the ordinance after that trial period. With regard to the substance of it, I, I don't think the issue is just cost for the city attorney to amend the ordinance. We have been involved over the years and council is well aware of the fact that we've had some severe animal hoarder situations that have required administrative search warrants to get into these homes. It has generated, uh, a lot of staff time and expense. And the co- council is certainly well aware of dangerous dog situations that we've been dealing with in multiple courts and incurring litigation expense in, in defending the public in these cases over the years. So it's not just the cost of looking into an ordinance and drafting revisions in accordance with council's wishes. It's the practical effect of what increasing the number of animals at residences within the city, uh, would have on, on, on neighbors and, and on the public in general. You know, these homes, a lot of the homes are on forty-foot lots. People are in this area, very close to one another. And, um, to have five or five dogs or, you know, eh, five animals of any sort in a small residential circumstance like that creates issues for, for our citizenry.
Was there any other discussion from council?
Yes, your honor. Yeah, uh, two points, um, and the first one I want to, uh, the very first thing, uh, as you are well aware, I jumped up and down about was the format this was coming to council. And I, I like yes or no's, you know, up or down. We can modify it, we can change it, we can throw it out and replace it, but I at least like a starting point. Now, that sounds like, and I don't mean any sort of criticism, by the way, of how it got here, because I absolutely agree and I think it's necessary. A resident's got an idea, it's got to get heard. It should be processed and I'm, I'm very proud that we're, we're talking quite seriously about this tonight. Um, to the substance of the issue on the table, uh, let me be real clear with my bona fides here. I'm, uh, in the old, uh, what, Team Pooch and Team Fido uh, or Team Whiskers, I'm definitely a dog person, always have been all my life. Nothing against the cat. So I love dogs, uh, animals in general, whether we're talking cats or dogs. I grew up and Mr. Sherman sort of stole a little bit of my thunder here. I grew up over on Sherry in the middle block. It's either forty by one twenty or fifty by one fifty over there, one of the two. I, as much as I love dogs, I don't know that I'd love them at seven thirty at night. Uh, you know, in the middle of winter, whenever, when they, they do what dogs do. And, you know, they play, they, they, uh, want to play with the kids in the next yard, maybe not at that time, but later on. So it's just, it's difficult for me in a community that was pre-planned and essentially stamped out in the fifty, sixty, seventies and the set lots, it's difficult to imagine, uh, multiple families. And I'll be honest with you, when I first read the, the recommendation, one of the early versions, the first thing I looked at it and said, are we opening the door to puppy mills or something here? And I realized that was not the intent. I've heard the gentleman speak and I give him all the credit in the world. So, but I think the potential for abuse is just inescapable here. Uh, I'm not aware of an ongoing problem with, uh, multiple animals. And to the point, somebody raised about foster animals and so on. By definition, a foster animal is a temporary, uh, is a temporary, uh, the, um, the word lost me, temporary custodial. Custody, yeah. Um, by definition, I'm not sure, and I'm, you know, throw out the legal. By definition, I'm not sure, and I'm, you know, throw at the legal council, but I'm not sure if I'm babysitting someone's dog for two months or taking one in as a charitable act. I certainly wouldn't want to block it as given what I told you a minute ago. And I'm not sure that the law currently would. Now, if we want to talk about vaccinating and treating animals, I think we got a question here and I'm, I'm, somebody said, well, what other answers do we have? Well, first of all, how about a 30-day amnesty period for any animals that need to be brought in from the cold, literally? Uh, and to allow for free clinics. We do a lot of sponsoring for animals. But I, I'll be honest with you. The problems that we've had in this community, and as was mentioned, is well documented, is not. Man, I can't say that because we've had some hoarder situations that broke that up. But the ones that come to us from goodness of heart as opposed to abuse or neglect have not been that way. They've been either a monetary concern or they, they inherited somebody's animal and they can't keep track of it. I think we have to be a compassionate community. So to tie all this up, I can't agree with the proposal. I'm not there. I won't be able to support it tonight. And when the conversation's done, I plan to offer a substitute motion, which will be for the moment to simply receive and file the report of the deputy chief. It doesn't kill it. It doesn't do anything. It keeps it on our docket, but, but indicates the staff and to the community, we're not ready to move forward yet on it. And that's, I can't, that's my opinion. So we'll see if it gets a second and passes. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else on council have anything they want to add? Uh, Mr. Bliss?
Yes, thank you, your honor. First off, um, this is an incredibly well researched and well thought of proposal from a resident. Uh, I just want to highlight that because I think it, it's very, very unique. Typically, we'll get ideas, we'll get an email sent our way, we'll get, uh, we'll get a message or a phone call. But this is a very well detailed proposal. And, and so I, I definitely think that we should be discussing this as has been noted by other council members. But I also agree with Mayor Grassley that when, when we have difficulty funding even $1,000 small projects for quality of life, we gotta make sure that this is the direction we want to go before we spend a ton of staff time and legal resources to do the review. I, I remember the, the tethering ordinance was months of legal and staff work, a lot of back and forth because it has to take into account a lot of unintended consequences. You know, when we do something like this, it can't be, uh, we can't paint with really broad stroke. We have to be very, very narrow because anything we do is going to have unintended consequences. Like a couple of them have come up, you know, we have small lots here. What did that mean for the potential increase in animal excrement? How, how many more rats might that draw? Does it open up for puppy mills as Councilman Corbett said? Is there potential increases on our already overworked and intact animal control and code enforcement departments to be able to, uh, you know, run this proposal the, the way that it, that it's written? And so I think it's a, I think it's a great discussion to have. I, I would absolutely second the motion to receive and file. I don't think this is a, the end of the discussion, but I think given the feedback right now from staff and from legal counsel, it's a no for me for now. You know, in time, just as I voted to increase the number of chickens, you know, I might do the same thing with pets in the future. You don't ever want to say no. But I think tonight and, and as for where we are as a city with our limited resources, I think this should be shelved temporarily and, you know, it can certainly be brought up at a later date.
Thank you. And I actually, yes, I have a question for that was the legal or for the clerk. Mr. Corbett, you are making a substitute motion, but you're not making it yet. You want us to vote on this?
Oh, my apologies. I just didn't want, there were, there was a council member, well, I think Mr. Bliss hadn't talked yet, so I didn't want to jump in. But I, I'll, okay, I'm, I'll move to offer a substitute motion. And that motion would be to receive and file in lieu of the, the motion we have, to receive and file the report from the deputy city manager on this matter.
Okay, and Mr. Bliss, you were supporting that?
No, your honor, I'll support that.
Okay, so we now have a substitute motion, which is to receive and file this report. It's been made by Councilman Corbett. It's been seconded by Councilman Bliss. Do we have any discussion on this substitute motion to file? Are there any other, Councilwoman Clark, did you want to say something?
Yeah, yeah, actually, like, a lot of great ideas came out of this discussion. Thank you so much to my colleagues for taking the time to address this very cool presentation that a resident brought out in front of us. I, I loved Emily Roarbox's idea to, um, to create an exception rule and maybe have some requirements that households have to meet in order to be able to increase their, the number of pets that they have for adoption purposes or fostering purposes. I really thought that was a great idea. And I like the idea to file it and discuss it later as well because it, it tells our resident that we're looking at it seriously. I mean, we've all had some really great stuff to say about it. And that maybe we'll be able to sit down and really hone in on what that would look like and address some concerns. Because I know, um, our police department and, uh, Department of Public Service had a lot of concerns that they wanted to say about it, but our residents didn't get the opportunity to see the back and forth on what that was. And we had a lot of scary words thrown out there today, like pet hoarding and, um, and all of that, that, uh, a lot of those concerns were addressed in some of his research. So I would like to see that information get put out there so that our residents can see it. So I'm in support of moving this, filing it and discussing it at a later date when we have the resources to do so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments from council?
I just said a clarification and I guess a question following up on Councilwoman Clark. Just with staff, the proposed resolution and then some of that back and forth is all included in the agenda packet that can be downloaded by a resident, correct? Okay, if there's anything missing, if we can make sure that that's included. Cause I, I agree. I want to make sure that they have all of the research that we're looking at as we make the decision tonight.
Yes, your honor, it's all included in the agenda packet, the Nate's, um, Nick's report, as well as the report from the deputy city manager.
The information is all out there. Okay, um, if there's no further comments, I'll just, they're on mine. Yeah, I think this was a, a good discussion. I remember the chicken ordinance. Um, I prepared that report for council. I remember it. That was a lot of work. Um, and, and that took a lot of time to get through there. It was a different situation than this. There are a lot of people outside of council who were working on that to, uh, to get that through. And, and it started, as I think Mr. Corbett said, it, it started with three hens. There was a sunset clause that was removed and then it was increased just last year. I think, I think Councilwoman Clark and I made the motions for that, I think, to, to increase it to six. So, so yeah, it's, you know, sometimes the time hasn't come. I wanted to increase the chickens last year to 10 and I got completely shot down on that, but who knows? Perhaps in the future, we will look at increasing all pets. So I am in favor of filing this. And with that, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote on the substitute motion to receive and file this report?
Councilwoman Roarback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up from the city clerk, the council appointments to the crime commission.
On March the 22nd, 2021, City Council reinstated the crime commission. The crime commission resolution states that there will be one council member representative and one council member alternate appointed to the crime commission. Staff request that council appoint this one council member representative and one council member alternate to the crime commission with terms expiring November the 8th, 2021. And for the purposes of the public, we will be appointing the resident members of the crime commission at the next council meeting. So on May the 24th, so if you're interested in joining, feel free to apply with the clerks.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we appoint Mayor Protem Soltis as the council rep to the crime commission.
All right, thank you. Uh, so support?
Your honor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support, ma'am.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Mayor Protem Soltis. Mr. Soltis? Your agreement? Agreement, please nod if you agree. Um, all right, is there any discussion among council? All right, seeing none. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roarback?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Soltis. Uh, next up, council representative, uh, the alternate, sorry, the council alternate. What is the wish of council?
Oh, I'm sorry. Your honor.
Mr. Corbett?
I, uh, am not aware of any reason the mayor can't serve on a committee or commission if duly appointed by the board. The clerk looked up. Is there a reason I don't know about?
Nope, I just paid attention.
Well, I won't make a joke or anything. I'll get right back to business then. So if you're willing, ma'am, I would be happy to nominate you as the alternate member of the crime commission if you would accept.
It would be honored. Thank you. Uh, is there support?
Your honor.
Uh, Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to appoint myself as the alternate to the crime commission. Is there any discussion? Um, all right, then, clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roarback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the appointment. Next up, our last report is from the DPS director. It is the West Nile Virus Abatement Reimbursement Resolution. Mrs. Marsh, can you report?
City residents are again eligible for reimbursement from the Oakland County for project expenses related to our fight against the West Nile virus. The DPS will be sending out crews in mid-May to drop Larvicide briquettes into residential catch basins throughout the entire city. These briquettes, which last 180 days, prevent mosquito larvae from maturing into adults, significantly reducing summer mosquito population. Basins will be tested periodically to assure that Larvicide is doing its job. The DPS is also responsible for treating areas of standing water in the parks and commercial and industrial areas such as stormwater retention basins, detention ponds and fountains and Larvicide on a monthly basis. Staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution to allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County for $3,910.84.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Roarback?
I move that, uh, council approves the resolution to allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County for the West Nile Virus Abatement, um, reimbursement at $3,910.84.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
Councilman Clark or Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roarback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, the awards. We have one. It's from the police chief for the purchase of extended service plan for Cisco phone system. Mrs. Marsh, report.
Yes, and we are joined tonight with James Blackburn from BPI if anybody has any follow-up questions. But on May the 1st of 2021, the extended five-year service plan for the city Cisco phone system expired. The service plan is crucial to maintaining our phone system throughout the city network. Information technology is requesting to purchase the extended service plan utilizing the Ma-Deel Cooperative Agreement for one year at a total cost of $15,251.29. This purchase was originally budgeted for, but the price has increased $3,251.29 due to additional service needs. Funding is available through potential savings with the backup servers that were currently placed on hold. The extended service plan will be purchased from Presidio with a company that provided the initial five-year plan. It is information technology's intention to move the phone system to a cloud-based system when it is up for replacement in fiscal year 2023. Therefore, staff and I recommend the approval of the extended service plan with Presidio for $15,251.29.
Thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your honor, I move that, I move that council approve the extended service plan with Presidio for $15,251.29.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
This is mayor.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Support, please.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, just, uh, I guess a question for, for IT. So this is the total cost of $15,000. How many phones typically break in a year? Cause I know, you know, through, I actually worked for a few years for a telecom company and the repair prices were somewhere around like a hundred dollars each. Uh, and they would advance out of home. Uh, and Cisco was one of the brands. So, I mean, it's been a long time. I don't know if the pricing has changed, but, uh, you know, at $15,000 for the year, that, that's a pretty significant amount of broken phones, right? Or is there something I'm missing?
Yeah, the phones very rarely break. I think we may have replaced two or three in the last five years. Uh, with this support agreement, it allows us to continue to receive support from Cisco on the phone system. So currently we have two physical servers, one at city hall and one at police department. And the software that rides on there was to manage the phone system. So it covers support for those, uh, which includes equipment replacements, maybe a physical failure, and also software updates for those. Plus, it covers the core firewall, uh, that bridges between the city network and the internet. It also covers our routers and all the switches. Plus all the phone handsets.
Anything else, Mr. Bliss?
Yeah, this is a follow-up question. What would be the alternative if this didn't pass, just for the sake of our residents?
Um, if the, if this did not pass and we did not renew the support, we would no longer receive software and security patches from Cisco, uh, making us vulnerable to either system failure or infiltration from, uh, the internet.
And, and your honor, did we shop providers of Cisco Smartnet for the updates or did we single towards this?
I, I can answer that.
Please.
The Presidio, because they're the installing vendor, they are also the preferred vendor from Cisco because they know the most about the system instead of somebody coming in cold. And this is a single-year contract. The other thing is we are getting preferred pricing off of a pre-bid contract. So it is very.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings?
Yes.
Councilor Roarback?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Soltis?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
I vote yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Grabstein?
I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, okay. So, uh, next up, we have the approval of the minutes. We have the special city council meeting minutes from April 19th. Uh, what is the wish of council?
Your honor.
Mr. Corbett?
Yeah, um, would we approve the special meeting minutes from the 19th of April, April, right? I'm sorry.
April 19th.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there support? Is there support?
Your honor.
Um, Soltis?
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the special minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilman Gaddings.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
And Mayor Grassley.
Vote yes motion carries. Thank you. And last up, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular city council meeting on April 26. What's the wish of counsel?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Clark.
I move that we approve the regular city council meeting minutes of 4:26:21.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Mayor.
Mr. Gaddings.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, can you please take a roll call vote?
Yes. Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Soltis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yes.
Councilman Gaddings.
Yes.
Mayor Grassley.
Vote yes motion carries. Thank you. There is no other regular business before us, so I invite closing comments from counsel, starting with Mr. Corbett.
Just very quickly this evening, Your Honor, there was an incident, I think a week or so ago, at one of our retail stores. And counsel usually gets reports of things that happen around the city. Without getting too deep into it, because I realize it's still subject to after-action reports and so on analysis. I just wanted to say that there are just so many dangerous situations that the police department and the community find themselves in. This one worked out. I think it's a tribute to a solid training, a good department, good leadership. I will tell you that that as I was reading along, you read these things and and over a little bit of time, they start to ramble on a bit. But my heart froze when I got to the words of something about a gun, because that can go bad any one of 200 ways. It didn't. There's a young life that will that was redeemed potentially. A community which is whole still and a tragedy averted. And again, I think it goes to solid police work and we'll see how it plays out. But I'm very proud of the the men and women who support us in all of our works, now whether it's police, you know, I'm talking police now, fire. And earlier tonight, I meant to say something on DPS. Those men and women occasionally get neglected because, you know, usually when anything goes boom or bang or falls apart in the city, the first ones on the scene to clean things up and ensure public safety are the DPS women and men. So I just want to just extend a hand out to them, congratulate everybody and to circle back. I'm glad everything worked out for all of us and that's it. Thank you. Have a good night, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. Just a few things this evening. I know we've gone on long. You know, we have a lot of residents watching who are all hanging in here, I assume, for the hotly debated West Nile virus abatement resolution. You know, I guess thank you to everybody for sticking around so long. This was a really productive meeting. We had a lot of detailed and complex discussions that moved the city forward. One thing that I want to call out that was passed without a lot of discussion or fanfare was the budget. To me, that's a really big win. There wasn't any any real conflict, you know. Our budget process works out a lot of the debate between council members. You know, public safety continued to be funded at the increased levels that we introduced a couple of years ago. The investments in our parks were actively amplified in this budget cycle. There's no tax increase. Counsel actually continues to leverage less than the approved mileage. You know, my my only my only worry, and I don't even know that I could call it a worry, but the challenge that I have is to, long-term, we're not necessarily setting aside money for big quality-of-life purchases like we do for, you know, large equipment purchases or things like that. And I'd like to see us start setting aside money each year for big parks investments, whether it's, you know, the the rec center that people have requested or a splash pad that people have requested or rebuilding the skate park, which is now really popular with the one down in Ferndale. I mean, I I think it's easy for us to say, we don't have the money, so we shouldn't do it. But I think it's equally as easy for us to start setting aside a little bit of money. And you never know what grant opportunity is going to come up that can hand us enough money to be able to do it with the savings that we have. So for the future budget years, that's something I'd like to see. You know, we don't even have to pick one. It can literally just be to set aside for a big quality-of-life enhancement, whether it's into our our parks or library, et cetera. But we've got so many needs around the city, you know, that if we can start budgeting and take advantage of a grant for one big swing at something, I think that could be really powerful. Second thing I want to talk about is that it's it's time for us to start planning to open up. It's time for us to start planning on getting back into into council chambers as quickly as as is safe. President Biden has relaxed all max mask mandates outside. On May 6, all outdoor events went up to 1,000 people, as long as it can be spread out with 20 people or less in each area. So things like like Trail Tunes of the Juneteenth event could actually be broader and be expanded as long as there wasn't 20 people or more. And I think it's like 1,000 square feet or something like that. And today, literally hours before this meeting, it was announced that 55% of Michiganders have gotten their vaccine, which then opened up in-person work for everyone in two weeks. You know, we're we're not out of the woods yet. We haven't gotten to, what is the phrase, like you back to normal? I think that the 70% lifts all mandates throughout. So we definitely have to be cautious and we have to be aware of that. But I think equally, we have to be aware and have to start planning for, what does it look like when we go back in person? What does it look like to do these events under what we believe it will be at that time with contingency plans in place? And so I know there was some misinformation, I think, that was out on out on the internet. And and I'd just like us to be able to clarify that with the with our internal groups that are planning projects and for when we expect to be having council meetings in person. Because I think it's really critical for us to make that deliberation, I guess, as public as possible, given all the announcements from our state and federal government. Finally, my last thing, I just want to echo the sentiment that Councilman Corbett said. I'd be remiss if I didn't say how proud of our police that I was. I'm continuously impressed by the way that they handle tough, challenging situations. They are some of the best trained and most empathetic in the entire area. And, you know, I am I am very proud and honored to live in a city where we have a department that that cares so much and will accurately assess a situation, what in what is a massive split-second decision-making in a way that resolves the situation without incident. And so very proud, very thankful. And, you know, I appreciate each and every one of the men and women in uniform in our department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilor Rorback.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to go back in time a little bit and say Happy Mother's Day to all of our mothers. And I appreciate all of you and I appreciate especially those that are in in weird places with their mothers and their situations as mothers or potential mothers. And, you know, it's it's a wonderful day to celebrate and it's also a challenging day. So I just want to acknowledge that and but also send my my special thanks to my own mother. She's awesome. Also, I want to also appreciate that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have some really amazing teachers in all of our school districts here in the city. And I just want to say thank you to our teachers. And this month, or in a couple of days, is the end of the month of Ramadan. And so I want to say Eid Bubaduk to all of the of those that are celebrating, our neighbors that are celebrating Ramadan this month. It's a very important celebration. And so I just wish you all the best. Okay, I have a few other things here. One is, I've heard a lot of questions about the tree cutting down that's happening on Barrington Street right now, which, for those that don't know what's happening, the trees that are being taken down right now are due to the the road project that's coming up. And I just want everybody to 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 know and to realize that those trees that come down due to road construction will be replaced by the city. So it is, I mean, as somebody who loves trees, it is always like a little bit heartbreaking to see an old growth tree come down. But we are committed as a city to to replacing those trees. And so I want everybody to know that that is that those trees aren't going to go away forever. They will be replaced and we will be replacing them with a greater biodiversity of trees. So it will help us in the future prevent some of the things that we've had with our current tree population. You know, if there's just a single type of tree in a single area, if something comes along, a disease or a pest that's like the Emerald Ashbore or Oakilt, it will decimate a whole area. We want to make sure we're planting a biodiversity of trees. So keep an eye out for that. There is the Treads on Tuesday Walking Club that starts tomorrow. And it is a free, you know, everybody's welcome to please come join us at the Civic Center Park this week. We're going to be going to different parks each day or each each week on Tuesday evenings at 7:00 PM. This Tuesday, we'll be meeting at the Civic Center Park at the gazebo in front of the Civic Center Building. So instead of in front of City Hall, so meet there. And our leader, Jason Theodora, from the Parks and Rec Board, will be leading the group. There are also T-shirts now available for our Treads on Tuesday group. So take a look at that. I hope we can get that up on like city website or something so people can access the link to that. But it is also on Facebook on our on the event page for the Treads on Tuesday program. There is also, oh, there is a, I was reached out to this week. And I know many of our council members were about noise and issues with the a site over on 1190 12 Mile Road and the ZBA was going to be looking at it. And residents on Ronald Streets, which actually is just around the corner from me. So I walked over there the other day to see what it was that they were experiencing. And, you know, there is an enormous disruption, especially to those residents that live right adjacent to this space, both in noise, outside of there. A lot of times that they're allowed to have the thing. And then there's a, what it is, is there's a giant MRI machine, a mobile MRI that comes and goes at random times outside of their allotted allowable time by the ZBA. And, you know, I know the residents on Ronald have really are pretty furious. And so I would like to hear more about what what it is, not here, not now. But I'd like to hear from staff about that issue and how how it is that we can make sure that if if there is a, you know, an allowance given to this business to have this mobile MRI space at these given times, that they actually are doing that and it's not going outside of those times. And if in fact it is, that it is not that that we revoke that. Because I think it is, if that was happening in my backyard, I would be absolutely furious. So I just think we have a responsibility to deal with that. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sherman.
The only thing I would add tonight, Your Honor, is to say that I wish, I hope everyone had a wonderful Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marsh.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Rotman, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gaddings.
Yes, Mrs. Mayor, thank you. As Mr. Corbett and Mr. Bliss mentioned, some good city employees. I think the whole staff here in Madison Heights is one of the best around. Everybody takes pride in their work, works hard, works the overtime, plows the snow, all the things that make a great city. And we're coming up in a couple of years on our 70th anniversary. And I think back, thinking back of all the folks that have come and gone, I think we've been really blessed with good administration, good staff, good folks in the rec department. Just overall, it's a great community. And thanks to the employees. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I just want to take a few minutes to thank a few people. To the rabbi who came on this evening to talk about how we are making the Jewish community feel safe in Madison Heights. It really warms my heart. I know that everyone in this community does a great job of trying to make everyone feel welcome. The Human Rights and Equity Commission is also working very hard to bring that to the forefront. So it really warmed my heart tonight to have him come out and say that because it's something we've been working hard on. Also, I want to thank the police, obviously, for their amazing interaction with the young man who was apprehended this week. And I also, I commend our police for being the shining example of the kind of police we would like to see in the world. So I really, really thank them for that. And I'm really excited to see that a couple gentlemen on one of the community forums have reached out to offer to mentor this young man throughout this process and hopefully afterwards. So hopefully, he's able to find those resources, too. I just want to thank this whole entire community for coming together in this time of need. And I would like to echo Mr. Bliss's sentiment that I can't wait to get back in chambers. But I do hope we find a great way, like these Zoom meetings, to keep our residents engaged and coming to meetings because we are seeing that more people are are coming to meetings and they're participating in meetings than ever before. And I think that Zoom allows them to do that. So I hope we're able to find an alternative once we're all back in chambers.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Soltis.
Thank you, Mayor. I do concur with my fellow council members that I'm very proud of our men and women in blue, police officers that handle the incredibly very difficult situation with the false professionalism. And actually, every single day, 365, 24/7, under the the great leadership of Chief Haynes, who does a fantastic job as a police chief and a deputy city manager. Also, on a letter note, you know, as the warm weather is here, so please, when you drive in the morning, take it easy. Heading out, when heading towards a stop sign, be cognizant of fellow bicycle riders like myself. Hopefully, you'll see me before I see you. But, you know, every day, I see numerous examples every morning of morning drivers in a super hurry. So please just slow down at the stop signs before the stop sign and don't accelerate on these turns without looking both ways. So, and that's all. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple of things I want to cover this evening. First is, I just want to thank all the officers that were involved in the incident last week. You know, last last meeting, Chief Haynes gave his presentation. And, you know, I I think what happened last week just really enforces the reinforces the the training that our officers have received. And they were able to handle that very tense situation and it did not escalate. And the suspect was apprehended without incident. And I just really want to commend all of the officers who were involved in that. I also want to thank the rabbi for coming out and speaking. This is Jewish Heritage Month. It's also, as you know, we heard, it's Asian Heritage Month. And I'm looking forward to see what the HRC is, HREC is doing to sort of promote that and to make people more aware of everything that's going on in those communities. I also want to thank the mother that brought the apraxia, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, the Apraxia Awareness Month to to my attention. I had the opportunity to speak with her and she said that the most challenging thing is just watching him get frustrated because he's not able to communicate, that he is fully aware of what's happening, but he can't communicate. And she just she just finds that so frustrating. And so I just, you know, there's all these different things that are going on. And one of the things with this was she's looking for some kind of community in the city, you know, other people who may be having children with this. you know, other people who may be having children with this issues. And I just think this is something, this would be a great opportunity for the, the HREC to look at, you know, bringing people together. I know we focused a lot, or they have focused a lot, on more of the racial-cultural diversity. But we also have people with different abilities. And I'm hesitating because there's so many different terminologies and it's so hard to know what to, which ones to use. But people with different abilities, people who have different medical conditions, that people just don't understand and aren't aware of. And so often, I know for me, growing up, someone who was disabled was somebody who had a missing limb, somebody who had, who had to use a wheelchair, something that you could see that they had a disability, but that's not true. There are so many invisible disabilities, there's so many things that we can't see. You know, this is Mental Health Awareness Month, you can't look at somebody and know what's going on in their brain. So just really excited that the HREC is working on these different, different things. And I think that was, that was pretty much it. There's been a lot going on, this meeting has been going on. I thank everybody for, for talking this evening. The time is 9:17, our next council meeting will be on May 24th, this meeting is adjourned, good night, thank you.